Thank you. All right, we'll move on to now item J1, Discussion Action, ECL Update, Various Ongoing Project Activity Status Report.
Yes, thank you. President Dice, it's now time for our update from Mr. Baker on our ongoing activities related to our Emeryville Center of Community Life Project. Mr. Baker?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I hope you can hear me. This is the bi-weekly update, or at every board meeting I tend to do an update on the ECL project. Make this as concise as possible, given the hour, but the agenda is a couple of things. Recently, last week, we had the Citizens Oversight Committee met. I'm pleased to announce that it was, they had a quorum with eight of the nine members present, all but the student members were present. So that was the first time that entire body had been there, so that was great. Introduced the new members. I gave a project update. The next, the COC decided that they'll be meeting on a bi-monthly basis, on the third Wednesday of the even-numbered months. So our next meeting will be scheduled for October. The, Tom Roush, the Chair, reported that the annual report is in progress, which is required by the bylaws. That report has been drafted, and now we've submitted the closeout of the fiscal year information, so the financial information is in progress, and so that will be issued to the committee members and reviewed and approved at the next COC meeting. Project budget documentation is underway. The district is currently training and implementing a program called Accountability, which is a, I'm sure that Mr. Benet could elaborate on this much greater than I can, but it's an accounting process used, that is used for school districts, that does many things. The thing that we like most about it, and we use it in other districts, is it allows us to track a multi-fiscal year project more effectively. So our senior financial controls manager, Toby Finn, has been involved, has been participating in those training sessions with Mark Benet and his staff. I'm not sure the timeline for the implementation is, but the group is focusing on that implementation, and that'll also enable us to put the ECL budget in the state standard format, the JCAF 32 format that I've mentioned previously. So once that accountability is sort of in place, then we'll complete that, and we will complete that state standard format and have that for board review in a next month. Also want to give a design and construction update, an update on our procurement of the testing and special inspection consultant, and our procurement of the inspector of record consultant. So, design and construction update, the soil mitigation, which is called the RAW remedial action work plan, work. That DTSC, the State Department of Toxic Substance Control, has been reviewing that document. We anticipate having that review complete this week. Our representative, Jose Lenovo, who has been a great partner, was on vacation for 10 days, and so we had a bit of a hiccup where that was delayed. We had thought about working with a colleague in his office, but thought better of it just because he's been so interactive and collaborative. He returned last Thursday, approved a revised work plan, which will enable us to maintain the schedule, and I'll talk about that in a minute, which was terrific. And we anticipate he will be done with the final comments, his back check comments this week. So we anticipate that we should have approval this week or next week of that, which will close that out. Demolition completion is now commenced. Previously, we were going to need to have DTSP approval before completing demolition. The workaround work plan was approved by Mr. Lenovo, so that's commenced this week, so we weren't, aren't going to lose any time, which is good. Turner site mobilization, which is their trailers onsite, site utilities, that is underway. We anticipate that by mid-September, we'll have trailers, and our office then will relocate from here to the job site, and Turner will be on-site full-time. Next month, we anticipate bringing the final demolition and RAW change orders to the, to the board. I want to point out that these have been budgeted for, in the, in the revised budget that we've, we've reviewed with you. It's just closing out what those final amounts are. Again, the soil remediation plan had been budgeted a million dollars total. We're anticipating that's going to be less than $800,000, and we've adjusted the budget accordingly, but we'll be bringing forth to your body the, the final change orders, it'll document the final amount, so there's won't be estimates, there'll actually be costs that will be, will be in place.
So are you saying the change orders will be less than the budget?
No, they'll be about what the budget are now.
Okay.
We've revised the budget based on the projections, but what's included in the budget is still an estimate for what those are.
Got you.
We need to review the documentation. One of our jobs is to review the, the backup, the hours. We signed the daily job cards for hours, but we need to check those and check the math.
Got you.
And all that, and once we do that, we'll bring those to you for approval. And then we will be able to turn those estimates in the budget, which are very close to what they'll be, into actual cost to date.
Got you.
Swimming pool design has commenced. A large group met with the swimming pool design consultant, Tristoto, yesterday at the site, including representatives from the city, and the, the city's manager of their adult recreational programs. We talked about a number of things toward the pool and the, the equipment room, and that work is now underway. We anticipate having the construction documents for the swimming pool design done by the end of October, which will then be bid out by Turner to a pre-qualified list of swimming pool contractors. And one thing we discussed were a number of bid alternates that we will then bring forth to the board, things such as different types of drainage system, different types of equipment, and lighting, and some other things. And so that'll allow us to choose some things to maintain our budget and then maximize the utility of that budget. In addition, we've had, we had two weeks ago, a furniture fixtures and equipment meeting with MK Think, who's the FFNE consultant. About a year ago, there was a very extensive FFNE list and budget that was developed by MK Think. We have some tasks, though, to, which we've kind of alluded to in previous presentations, one of which is to take an inventory of existing furniture at both this site, and the N8 site, and the temporary high school site. Some of, some new furniture on that list has already been purchased and is in use at the temporary high school site. The goal here is to identify what can be reused and what has been purchased for reuse, so that we can, and we, we think there'll be some, quite a bit of savings from that, from what's been budgeted. Again, if you recall, we adjusted that budget downward in the budget update because of those things. We're going to identify, we're, we're going to work with Dr. Rubio to identify stakeholders that should be involved in that, such as teaching staff, et cetera. We'll actually go and do an inventory and tag things that will be saved. Then we, and we're going to do that along with MK Think, who's going to provide their expertise in terms of life cycle and longevity of things that are there, so they can give us a professional opinion, and those decisions can be made. And then that, that stakeholder group will identify those things, and will revise that list, so we'll know what needs to be purchased new. And we anticipate that inventory exercise taking place next month. So here's my, my 12-week look-ahead schedule. You will notice that the, the RAW report review and the demolition completion have slipped out a couple of weeks, but the other activities have not. And that's because DTSC approved our plan for starting mobilization and completing demolition while they are reviewing their report. So the overall schedule has not changed at all. Again, activities in September will include mobilization, completing the interior demolition of Building E, shoring existing structures for grading, doing some site work utilities, and doing the building pad grading. This is the, what's called rough grading, getting the pads ready where the, where the slabs and foundations are going to go. Then in October, real site utility work will take place, electrical, water, domestic and far water, site communications, and site utilities should be complete at the end of October. And then November, we're going to start seeing footing and foundation form are commencing. It's one thing that's, we need to watch the weather carefully. The rainy season usually starts around the end of October. It'll be good to have the grading and site utilities done. That's usually what gets disrupted most when you have weather problems. Once we, you know, keep our fingers crossed in November that we get footings and foundations in, once the concrete's in, we're impacted by weather a lot less. Just as long as it's not raining, they can work out there, but won't have any soil issues. So we're going to be working with Turner real carefully and closely to sequence work so we mitigate possible delays if we get some rainy weather. I want to talk next about testing and special inspection. So this consultant is a third-party consultant that provides, it's a testing laboratory that provides special inspections, technical inspections, and materials testing specified by the architects and engineers. It's a really important consultant because they provide, and this is things like concrete strength testing, and welding observation, and steel fabrication in the shop. It's a very important quality assurance exercise where we check and make sure that things are being fabricated, constructed per the plans and specifications. It's, it's, we've, in April, the district issued a request for proposals to ensure firms of public procurement, which included a detailed scope of work for the ECL project. Eight proposals were received. We then, when we started work in May, we kind of received, they came in, and we received them, and so we have been evaluating those. And I want to go over tonight our evaluation methodology, also our recommendation, and discuss the board approval and award process. So you see, there was a spreadsheet, was issued, a very complicated spreadsheet. I apologize for the complexity and the, the, the lack of explanation. I'm going to go walk through an overview of this. It's much less complicated than it looks. One of the challenges we had is that the RFP that was issued by the district-
Sorry to interrupt, but, yeah, can you give me some examples of the kind of the testing or specialized inspection?
Sure. One of those is concrete strength. So when you pour a concrete slab or a concrete foundation, you do what are called, so you core cylinders, you, you cut a cylinder through the concrete. And then they take, they'll take three cylinders, and they do destructive testing, usually at three milestones. They'll do a seven-day test, a 14-day test, and a 28-day test. And the, the structural specs specify the strength that needs to have each of those days. And the point there is you want to test to make sure that that concrete is, that it's cured to the strength which is designed. Also, steel fabrication. Steel fabrication is going to be done at an off-site location, and I believe in, up in northern Cal, the Sacramento Valley. And we want to have somebody there observing to make sure that the steel is being fabricated to the specified tolerances and procedures. That steel is fabricated in a controlled environment, in a shop. They'll do things, they'll measure heat, air, to make sure that it's curing properly. Also, compaction testing. When soil is compacted, it's very important the soil be compacted to very specific tolerances, so that when we put slabs and concrete on top of it, you don't get settlement. And there's a host of those tests, and they're really important. This testing laboratory representative, we co-located in our trailer, so we can observe that. Turner needs to call for those inspections through us, but then we'll monitor those completion. The test results will be reviewed by the architect and engineer of record and ourselves for compliance with the contract documents. It's, it's probably the most important QAQC exercise that we'll be doing out there.
QAQC.
And it needs quality, quality control, quality assurance. Quality control is responsible contractor. We're assuring that that quality control is in place.
Yeah. And, and the same entity is expert on concrete and on steel and on soil?
What they typically have is part of our, part of the, the RFP process was firms need to have all these expertises. So one of our evaluations, do they have expertise in soil and concrete and steel? And there are other things like when flooring is applied, there's a, there's a certain procedure for how adhesive works and how it has to cure, all those sorts of things. And so one of the, one of the outcomes of the RFP, we only got eight submittals, because there aren't that many firms that, there are only a handful of firms that have all those expertises. And one of our evaluations was to evaluate their certifications for different testing, their staff qualifications. In fact, you'll see here on this chart, on the left, you'll see, these are the items that the RFP letter issued by the district asked them to submit information on. So what we did is we evaluated. Now, in that RFP, it didn't say, "We're going to give you X points for this and Y points for this." It just said, "We want you to submit this information, and we'll evaluate it." It didn't specify an evaluation methodology, which is done sometimes, sometimes isn't. So our charge was to evaluate those, but also put in place an evaluation methodology which is transparent, comprehensive, and objective. And that's what I kind of want to review with this group tonight.
Okay.
The, so we reviewed the, the, the things you list here, in that, that first category, those dozen or so things. We're actually, in the RFP letter, said, "Please submit us information on these, this information." So we, I mean, in Swinburne, we had three of our team, Kerry Talbot, who's our construction manager, and Monley Hardesty, who's the project manager for the non-Turner activities, and myself, each evaluated these independently. Then we got together, went through our scores. Our scores weren't really that different, so we reached a consensus on our scoring. So this is the basis of three independent people looking at this, who have expertise in overseeing these types of consultants, and we evaluated the scores. So we took all the sort of, the criteria that we asked for, and we added those up, and that shows in that bottom row where it says 37, 20, 44, 29. Then we ranked them. So we ranked them, the highest scoring points got an eight, and the lowest one got a one. It's kind of a common way to do this stuff. We also asked for DSA project experience, so experience they had with DSA projects. Some of these folks have done a lot of shopping centers and private projects, other public projects. We wanted projects with Division of State Architects School projects, because the specs include specific procedures that are required by DSA. And you'll see, here's the dollars, in millions of dollars that they, what they put forth. And we ranked those on a scale of one to eight. Then they gave us a fee proposal, based on the detailed scope of work. There was a set of drawings and specs issued with the RFP that says, "Here's what you need to do." And then they gave us their fee proposals, and that's the dollar figure at the bottom. We ranked those on a scale of one to eight, the reverse. The lower fee got a higher score, and the higher fee got a lower score. So this is just kind of how we scored it. We didn't do any evaluation. We're just saying, we did some evaluate, but this is really how we ranked everything. And then the next sheet shows how we evaluated it. Any questions about this?
I don't have a question. I have a comment, just that I didn't get to look at this with you, but I, I, even before I turned the page to see how you ranked them, I, I felt number eight looked the most promising to me.
Any questions? I know, I know it's, I apologize if it's, if I'm not explaining it clearly, but I hope that you guys, any questions, please feel free to ask.
But this is, is this the same as the inspector on record?
No, I'll talk, that'll be, the next one, the next consultant we select, which is going to be in two weeks, is going to be, or the next report we give, I'll explain that timeline, will be that. That's a different, completely different, this is technical compliance with the way things are designed.
Got you.
Engineering, engineering compliance, to make sure things are, are installed as they were designed, as they were engineered.
I'm with you.
The inspector of record is the state's code inspector for code compliance.
Got you.
Is there a specific line item in the budget for this?
Yes, there is.
And what do we have for that?
I confess, I, there's an overall budget, I think, for both IOR and Testing Lab for, I think, a million dollars. It's in that, that range. I apologize, I don't have that figure here.
Yeah.
But when we do, we'll come back again on this one. I'll, I'll have that figure so that you'll, the board will understand it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Go to the next page, and one thing I want to point out before we go into this is, there was a math error in the one that was issued to the board previously and posted on the website. It's fairly inconsequential. I'll explain what that is. The copy that you have in front of you and the copy shown on the screen corrects the math error, but I'll explain that in a minute. I don't think the results are any different, but I just want to point that out.
Do you know, or does Ms. Tamerino, if the posted version that's on the website is the corrected or the incorrect version?
No, the information just came in after it was posted, so what I can do is go back and post the corrected version with that, you know, annotation.
That'd be great, if we could just have the, available to the public, the version that we're looking at.
So one, one kind of best practice we have is when we do these things, is we evaluate things different ways to see what the outcome is. And what's, if it, if it works properly, you'll get kind of a similar outcome, and it'll really kind of tell you. And the reason we do the different, different methodologies is to, again, dilute any perception of bias. And so we try to be really objective, and then also do our point scoring in different met, different ways. And it's kind of a thing we've done after having some procurements that were, were challenging, and it really shows different, different ways of doing things. So we take those point scores, and we kind of add them up different ways. So this is a little bit arcane, so I again apologize in advance if it's, if it's something that, that is, is maybe confusing. I invite, of course, your questions. The first method is really easy. We take the total score of all those 12 criteria, the total score, the total ranking for that, the ranking for DSA experience, and the ranking for fee proposal. We give one-third equal weight to each. We just add them up and see what we get. So that's that, when we ranked them on a scale of one to eight. And so you see the totals there. So that's out of a total of 24 points, that shows you what you get. The darkest orange is the first, the first highest score, the medium orange is the middle score, and the, the light orange is the third score. So this information is just a way of adding the points up.
And Mr. Baker, I appreciate your thoroughness. You may not have to go on as the board wants you to, through every single-
Okay, all right. I'll then summarize then. Method, method number two is we combine the DSA experience with the point scores, because the dollar figure is kind of a weird, you know, it depends, that depends just how many things they submitted. We don't want to penalize someone for submitting, you know, just five projects, and someone else submitted eight. So we, we combine that together, and we gave half, half weight to the proposal fee, half weight to the scoring, just to the scoring different way. Kind of got the same results. Second and third place are different, first place the same. Third method, we said, we said we give only a third of the weight to the fee, which kind of we like to not give the, for professional services, maybe not the biggest weight to the fee. Came up with the same results. We then did something where you, some agencies will take the highest and lowest fee and, and other things and toss them out, and we did that. What that shows, we got the same results. And what that shows, that, that is a tool people use to show kind of consistency. You take the outliers out. But what's remarkable, and I've never had one work this way, is that firm number eight came in first place every time, with kind of three, six different ways of looking at it.
What, what are next steps then? Do you, are you moving forward? Do you need board approval to move forward on number?
So here's my question is, is that, this is the evaluation. We just completed this week. I, I know that the board typically has two readings, a first reading and a second reading. The former contract for this firm will be the standard professional services agreement that was issued with a proposal. So it's the same agreement that we have, that, that Nenuan Moore has for hazmat testing and all that. Our recommended firm is number eight, which I will, I will state is Signet Laboratories. But we, my question is this, I'd like to come back in two weeks to propose to award the contract. I know this is not really a first reading, but the results were so clear, we thought we might want to see, ask the board what, how it would like us to proceed.
I do note that we've, we also, in the fall last year, created some latitude for this project specifically. So I think we need to revisit that conversation, because I can't, I know that we've, we've said this particular project, when there's a need to go with one, there's no need to revisit or, I mean, certain things. So I think, and also, we also spoke about using the facilities committee as a, a first swing through and consider that as a first reading as well. So I just wanted to push that out there. But that's helpful, that you brought it up. But I do know that in terms of, for us, I think we just need to know that, one, it was one that was budgeted for. What's our timeline to get it in front of us and approved? Because that will help, I mean, I think that will help any decision that needs to be made, because we have to get it done. So it's not like we have this, we have six months to worry about it. Board members, comments on that?
Is there, I guess, some urgency to moving that along?
There's, we have a, because we've done the RAW work and demo work, we have a testing lab in place now to do that. They're able to do that. What we'd like, the, the course that has been, that the, the district took was to hire that consultant for that first phase, but then because of the size of the contract, go out to public procurement for this. So this lines up with the lease, leaseback scope of work, which is going to start in September. Our first testing is going to be probably towards the end of September, so it would be, it would be, it would be, from a scheduling standpoint, if we were to vote to award this contract at the next board meeting, which is the September 9th, I think, that would be preferable than waiting until the end of September, in terms of schedule. We don't need to do it tonight, but two weeks would be, would be preferable to four weeks from now, in terms of schedule. Is there a facilities meeting?
That's coming up on the retreat, actually.
Yeah.
No, I would just ask if we could at least get the contract-
Yeah, sure, sure.
You know, before the next meeting, or as soon as possible.
I can do that tomorrow.
Okay. And I think, you know, that would at least suffice for us to at least be able to look at the contract, and if we have any questions, to forward those questions to you. And then when we come back on the 10th, if everyone is in agreement, then we can just go ahead and approve the contract then. I don't know how the board feels about that, but, you know, that's a suggestion. We get the contract early, overlook it, come back on the 10th and approve it, if everyone is, is clear and fine.
Well, our streamlined procedures I recommended, or recall, rather, was, was where, you know, the schedules were, you know, such that, that, that there was a benefit to improving it after one reading. We, we choose to do it after one reading, preferably with a review by the finance committee ahead of time, but-
Facilities, or whichever one it was?
Our facilities, rather.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm, I'm fine with planning to do it on the 10th, and if we can get the contract a little early, I'm, I'm fine. All the better.
It helps. Christian, remember Pat's?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm feeling like there's some momentum on eight, but I want to slow that down. When I look through this chart-
[laughing]
Sorry. When I look at this chart, and I, you know, if you think your methodology is arcane, you should see my spreadsheet. You know, some things really popped out to me, what you sort of chose to exclude, and what you chose not to exclude, what you chose to highlight, and what you, you know, and I agree with you, these are all very standard methodologies and the criterion matrix. But a couple of things, if you know anything about me, price immediately jumps out for me. But the other things that really stuck for me were location and minority ownership. And I feel like as we go down, there are two companies that had both of those things, and a couple of them that were local. So what did you use to determine location?
Location is, is a bit different, though. Location is the location of their laboratory.
Uh huh.
Because it's being able, being able to turn around laboratory tests quickly.
Right. And so where is the laboratory? What would be considered a five?
Like, I, you know, in the Oakland, Berkeley, Emeryville region.
Perfect. Then, so that's location, I mean, that's really-
Our sector.
Hmm?
Our sector.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the exact location, but I know that many of these have very local laboratories.
Yeah. So it just, it troubles me that, you know, what's a three means that we're looking at a company that's not local, to their laboratories, right? And they're also not minority-owned, and, you know, they are the largest of the companies. So when we look at eight, those two things stuck out to me, is that they are not local, and they're probably, and I think you said it's Signet, so I'm assuming they're a publicly traded company as opposed to-
Yeah, I'm, I have no idea. I don't, I don't believe they are. It's, they're not that large, but they, I don't, and I don't know exactly, but their laboratory, I think, is in Hayward.
Yeah.
Something like that. You know, one of the challenges that we had is that the RFP document did not give any, added any weight of one criteria over the other.
Right. And that's fine. I'm just saying that I'm giving weight.
But these are great comments, though.
Yeah. And so I'm just sort of thinking, particularly given, I want to say, Mr.'s comments earlier this evening.
Mr. Wong.
Mr. Wong, thank you, yeah. It's, it's an opportunity for us to do some things, and then also I know there's some incentive in California law, when we do construction contracts, that if we do give a percentage of it to, you know, minority-owned or women-owned entities, that, that, that's sort of their intent. So I think to dismiss them because they had the lowest bid, which is a challenge, you know, and I love lowest bids. And they're also a particularly large company, because they've done this before, so they don't, they're not like the other ones just has no experience. So for me, it really stuck, struck out to me, I think it's Company Six really stuck out. They both had the lowest bid, they're local, they're minority-owned. Their safety record gave me pause.
Company Six is the highest.
I'm sorry, Five.
No, right, I was looking at Five.
Five, sorry, I apologize. I'm looking at my wrong column here. Five had the lowest bid, and then, you know, and they had to, you know, $208 million of business, so they're not some fly-by-night like Six who had a high bid and is only $15,000.
Yeah, and, and number five finished second or third in those-
In the first few criterias, and it's one of those things where I feel like our guiding principles, yes, there's a clear number one, but to me, they're not that far off. That's one of the problems with these criterion matrices, is the distance from one to another, and it's, when you look at the averages, the biggest difference is right there in your second criteria. It's either you're minority-owned or you're not.
And I might want to add to, yeah, I would add, just for the boards to note that if we're, if we're going, and I don't know how, to what extent tonight, we're going to look specifically at these items. I, I think it might be, I wouldn't recommend to the board as superintendent that we look at any individual ones, but if we, if we are going to do that, then at the same, for the same company, we're looking at number, number five, they also scored the lowest in safety.
Yeah.
And so I'd be concerned about that and their litigation score. So I-
Correlation between those two.
I, I certainly, yeah, probably. So I, I want to, I do want to thank Mr. Baker for- So I, I, I want to, I do want to thank Mr. Baker for looking at, you know, you, you did this with the value engineering process. I just want to say thank you for looking at a combination of multiple elements. I haven't spoken, Mr. Baker, fortunately, about this, but when I had mentioned earlier that number eight looked very promising to me, it was because I thought of, when you look at the combination of elements, before I flipped over and saw how you did it, I quickly did some scratching on my own, and I thought, well, between how well they scored in so many areas, although I know, as Mr. Pat's has pointed out, that they, this particular company may not be minority or, or female-owned, that, and knowing our budget constraints, it looked, for those reasons and multiple, the multiple factors, it looked awfully promising to me.
So one of the things, the way that the RFP letter was written, it had three sections that said, paragraph one, give us your experience on these, these, these twelve things. Paragraph two, give us your DSA project experience and a dollar value. Paragraph three, give us a fee proposal. So the way that, the way that typically public contract code interprets those RFPs is your evaluation methodology needs to match what's shown on the RFP. So this is kind of as close as we could get. It's very common, for example, in RFPs to give extra points for MB, WB firms, really, that, that's commonly done. And you say you're going to get extra five points or something like that, but we didn't do that in the RFP, so it's hard to, that's, that's why we gave even weight to those first things, because the RFP letter didn't give precedence to, you know, oh, will you get more points if you're local, or, that's why it's hard to do it that way. So we, we, we took the RFP letter issued back in April, and we kind of interpreted as close as we could to evaluate it, to align with what we asked for. So that's, that's why we did it this way.
Right, but we're not locked into, I mean, if you're saying to me that we can only go by they scored the most points there for-
No, 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 we're not locked into it. We, we're, again, we tried to be as objective, given what we had to work with as we could.
But it did seem like you were saying, we need to, we need to reflect the relative priority-
Right.
-that was in the RFP letter.
Correct, that's right.
And that we could be opening ourselves up to-
Right.
-liability if we overweighted one factor-
Right, yeah.
-that we didn't identify as so overweighted in the RFP letter.
Best practice is that when there's not a scoring system in the RFP, is you evaluate it multiple ways and see, you know, kind of average things out, or do, do some methodology that looks at things multiple ways and achieves a result.
Yeah.
But they're, again, they've come in second and third in a variety of things.
Correct, they're excellent points you raise.
You know, it's not as if they're the bottom company and we're really going far from the RFP. We're really sticking to, we're using the RFP criteria, we're just aligning it with a local business. We're aligning it with, you know, people of color or a woman-owned business, things that I think as a board-
No, I agree.
-that we should reflect. I mean, it's, it's pretty clear to me-
It's our CBA.
That's our CBA.
That's our CBA.
So can I ask this, though, question? What would give a score of a one? So for-
Well, we ranked them on one to five. The thing is, for some of these categories, like the minority-owned business, either you are or you aren't, so you either get a zero or a five.
Well, let's, let me be specific again. For safety and litigation, how would, would you score that as a one?
So, I mean, granted, that's, those are, we're doing it subjectively, because we're on a scale of one to five, and what usually is you read all of them.
Right.
That's what I, you read all of them, and, you know, kind of compare the others, would you give them, rank them a one to five? So, safety means they had a high EMR experience modification rate, which is the, the, a, a number that insurers give, give companies if they have, if they had safety claims, if they had injuries, et cetera.
Right, right.
So the more of those they have, the, the higher that number is. So a high number's not a good thing, you want a low number.
Okay.
On litigation, we asked them if they had litigation with public agencies that was in there, and if they didn't have any, a couple of them said we'd have none, they got fives. One firm had listed several things, and so they got, they got, they got a lower score. So that's how we, we ranked them on a scale of one to five, which is another pretty common methodology used in these evaluations.
So a firm with one-
So if I see a one in safety, that's letting me know that this firm has had a lot of claims-
Correct.
-regarding their safety.
That means they may have had injuries on site, and they, again, they're insured based on incidents-
Right.
-gives them that score.
Same for litigation. A one on litigation is going to be, uh-
So it could have been, you know, five safety, you know, issues, or it could have been three.
Right.
Okay. Whereas some of the other ones maybe had none, that's why they got a four or a five.
So this, the safety you're getting from the insurance entity, the litigation-
Yeah, we asked them to provide safety information.
The litigation score, is that self-report then?
Yeah, that was, that's self-reporting. I mean, there's, there's a, they, they sign a document, a, you know, a-
An affidavit.
An affidavit. We didn't do the, I mean, sometimes for large procurements, we actually will do legal due diligence. Our recommendation for this type of firm is, they commonly don't, testing labs don't have claims frequently. If it was a contractor, that would be a different situation. We would want to maybe do some due diligence, but not commonly done for this kind of procurement.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the methodology?
Good discussion.
I just, I, well, I just had a question. I think it will help to know whether or not there's someone that, any members of the team that's kind of doing the assessment, if there's, if they're familiar with or have worked with a particular-
Those of us who did the evaluation have worked, I've actually worked with six of the eight firms, and Kerry Talbot and the Monley Hardisty have worked with several as well. So there, there, there's only two on that list that I have not worked with. But, you know, that's why we put numbers one to eight and try, we don't, we don't want that to, to enter into our evaluation at all.
Well, that's helpful.
Yeah, and so, and, and I did run the numbers myself, and I actually came up with five being number two on the, just compared to the mean, but part of that is because it's a zero or a five in the minority, but when you look at it just all the way down, give the average score, compare to them, if they're above or below the mean, they really score high because of that. And it's treating every criteria equally, I'm not going off the RFP at all. If you do, if you compare not ranked, but actually where the average is, it's kind of an interesting kind of difference.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, you're probably right, because, you know, we, we, they show up.
Yeah.
You know, you can see where they show up, and then we do that one.
They show up second and third. So I, again, I'm just throwing that out there, that I just, I don't want to pick somebody because they came in first because they're the largest firm and-
Well, they're, they're not the largest firm actually on the list. They, they-
Number eight wasn't?
No.